We're calling the regular meeting of the Calaveras County Planning Commission to order just a couple minutes after nine, and we will get started with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any staff announcements or agenda changes today?
Good morning, Madam Chair. No agendas changes or staff announcements. Thank you.
Thank you. Then, we will open up the general public comment period for anybody who would like to speak on any land use item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission and is not on our agenda today. Is there anybody here to give general public comment? No? Didn't really think so. Annette, do we have anybody online?
No online public comment.
Great, then we will close the general public comment period and open the consent agenda, which just includes minutes of previous meetings. Is there any member of the public or the commission who would like to remove an item from the consent agenda for further discussion? Nope. Is there anybody that would like to?
I'll move that we adopt the minutes of April 13th, 2023, and May 25th, 2023.
I'll second that.
Well done.
Any discussion?
Missed achievement.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 5-0. Everybody here. The first item on our regular agenda is item 2023-016 zoning amendment for Angela Ramage. Not sure on that spelling. Madeline, would you like to introduce this?
I would. I'm just having so many technical difficulties.
Okay.
I'm not sure your microphone is on either.
Make yourself glow.
My apologies. I'm having technical difficulties. I can't get the PowerPoint presentation to share up on the screen because I cannot get this computer to connect to the Zoom. Well, I suppose I could do this without the presentation. It's mostly figures for you to see the parceling question.
Go ahead without the presentation?
Yeah.
Because I can't get this to go. I don't know. Computers, gotta love them.
Okay, my apologies. All right, so, good morning.
Good morning.
Madeline Flandreau, Planner 3. Today, I am presenting project number 2023-016 zoning amendment for Angela Ramage. The proposal is to amend the zoning of approximately 0.98 acre portion of APN 010029-002 from general forest to general agriculture for consistency with an adjacent parcel to complete a lot line adjustment. The subject parcel is located at 7908... And there it is.
Holtergeist. Well, you're just so sweet, Annette. Thank you.
The subject parcel is located at 79... Do I have access to this? I do. Check it out. I can at least... Well, I can't set it up for full screen, but you can at least see what we're talking about. So, the subject parcel is located at 7908 Shad Road in Willsville, five miles east of the intersection of Railroad Flat Road and Blue Mountain Road. Can you go to that next slide? Yeah, there it is. Perfect, thank you. The subject parcel is approximately 4.2 acres in size and is currently developed with a single-family residence, which is served by onsite septic and domestic well. The southern portion proposed to be merged with the adjacent parcel, APN 010-029-001, is vacant. If you see... Can you go to that aerial image, just the one before number four? Yeah. So, this is the subject parcel highlighted in green. You can see the single-family residence there in the sort of northeastern portion. Please note that the boundary lines are completely off in this GIS image. The northwestern parcel lines are supposed to be in line with Shad Road. So, a lot line adjustment application was received in May of 2022 by the Surveyor's Office and is waiting approval of the zoning amendment to complete the process. The adjustment would take a 0.98 acre portion of the subject parcel and add it to APN 010029001, which you see just adjacent there to the southwest, which is zone general agriculture. If this portion is rezoned, the landowners could adjust the boundary between the two parcels without any zoning conflicts. So, the general plan land use designation is resource production, which is suitable for ag operations and timber production intended for parcels 40 to 160 acres in size. Obviously, this parcel is non-conforming in size. Compatible zones include general forest, timber production, general agriculture, agricultural preserve, rural home industry, recreation, and public service. So, rezoning this portion of the subject parcel to general ag would be consistent with the land use designation. This area of Willsville contains a mix of zoning classifications. If you can show me Slide 7, please. Including large general forest parcels, smaller parcels zone general ag, parcels owned by Sierra Pacific Industries, which is on timber production and public service and recreational. The subject parcel was actually rezoned from rural residential to general forest during the county's 2020 zoning map update in order to be consistent with the resource production land use designation. Although A1 and GF are both resource zones, they're intended for much different land uses. The GF zone is intended to provide a resource production zone for commercial timber, whereas the A1 zone is intended to be the main resource production zone for general farming and ranching practices. This area of Shad Road is where ownership transitions from parcels of varying sizes, as you can see if you would go guess. Thank you. Parcels of varying sizes, most of which are developed with single-family residences, to large parcels owned by SPI, which are in timber production. The portion of the subject parcel proposed to be rezoned contains natural vegetation and is devoid of structures. Although the California Natural Diversity Database does identify some special set of species within a five-mile radius, the rezoning of an approximately 0.98 acre portion of the subject parcel in order to be merged with the adjacent parcel will not change the current primary residential uses of either parcel. So, this application was routed for 30 days, and no comments or concerns were received from any county departments, public agencies, or the public neighboring parcels. This activity is covered by the common sense exemption that SEQA applies only to projects which have the potential for causing a significant effect on the environment. Rezoning the subject parcel from GF to A1 will not result in more intensive permitted uses being allowed to occur just due to the size of the parcel. The potential for residential development will not change as one single-family residence and one accessory dwelling is permitted per legal parcel in both the A1 and the GF zones, and there's already a residence. Any agricultural uses will be limited due to the small size of both parcels, actually, and the elevation of this area, which is approximately 3,000 feet. The subject parcel is developed with residential structures, compacted gravel driveway. However, the portion proposed is undeveloped and contains native vegetation. So, to conclude, staff finds the proposed rezon to A1 is consistent with the general plan land use designation of resource production, and while the parcel size will remain non-conforming, no new parcel is being created and no non-conforming use is being expanded. The proposed zoning amendment is consistent with both the general plan and zoning code. The current residential use of the property is permitted in the A1 zone, and the size of the parcel is more beneficial to a residential primary use of the land rather than a resource zone. Simultaneous lot line adjustment is being processed to reflect the change in ownership of the rezoned portion of the parcel, and the A1 zoning will be consistent throughout the parcel with the applicant's adjacent A1 zone parcel. In addition, staff found that the project will not have a significant effect on the environment due to the existing site uses and limitations. And I believe the applicant, Angela Ramage, is here if you have any questions for her or for me.
Are there any questions for Madeline?
One question I have is, is there a way that we can attach a map to the resolution that actually shows that the boundary line is Shad Road?
Yes, there's supposed to be an exhibit attached at the end of the resolution. My apologies. Is...
The assessors' map is here showing it.
The assessive map shows it. Of course, the assessive map says it for assessment purposes homework, but...
Yeah, they're supposed to be...
Do you not have a second page to your resolution?
Yes. Yeah, but it's the inaccurate map as far as Shad Road's concerned. That's what I'm... What I'm saying is, you know, if we're saying this is what it is...
Using the lot line adjustment map, perhaps, you're saying?
That would probably be good.
Something different that I create that shows the correct...
Yeah, because you have, in the staff report, you have what the adjusted things will be. We don't have something that shows the little triangle.
Yes. Would the applicant like to say anything? No. Do you believe Madeline has represented it well?
I just thank you for all doing this because this has been a long journey for me. As you can see, I applied in May of 2022, so I'm a year into this. So, I'm not giving up. So, yeah, if there's any... Do you have any questions? The owners of the other property are here. Christine and Jerry Clark. So, we are all in agreement to this. So, yeah. Do you have any... Sorry. Do you have any questions?
I just have a question from Madeline.
Yeah.
And I probably can't say this forever, but being new, I'm just curious, is it possible to do a boundary line adjustment on two differently zoned parcels or both parcels have to be zoned correctly?
We need to have that consistency.
You need to have...
Because otherwise, you're creating split zoning. We don't want to have split zoning.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, anytime you look at a boundary line adjustment, we could hear folks asking for a zoning change.
Yes.
To make it contiguous.
Yes.
Thank you.
The ironic thing is, we have a chicken and egg segment. We are creating a split zone right now, and then it'll be adjusted so that it won't be.
The boundary line adjustment was conditioned to have this rezoned, so that can't happen without this process.
Yeah, right.
Also, the Board of Supervisors has to approve rezoning amendment before it becomes effective. Yes. So, it is kind of a... Thank you. Is there any member of the public who would like to speak to this item? You guys really don't want to talk about this. Then, we will close the public comment portion of this hearing and bring it back to the commissioners. Is there anything else before we talk about the resolution?
I need to talk about the resolution, that's all.
Okay. Nothing from anybody else. Okay. Go, Tim.
Okay. Let's... In the title of the resolution, it says, "We are approving the notice of exemption." I think the notice of exemption should be attached as Exhibit B to the resolution. Should be attached as an... It's attached as an attachment to the staff report, but since it's something we're approving, I think I'd ought to...
We're only recommending that the board approve.
Yeah, but isn't it a... Wouldn't it be a good idea to put what we're recommending to approve?
Well, in the... I mean, we wouldn't attach our negative declaration to the resolution. How... What do you think?
I honestly think that if the notice of exemption is something that you've looked at and you're not recommending any changes to it, that it doesn't really need to be incorporated. I mean, in fact, a notice of exemption doesn't legally require the approval of the planning commissioner to board. The agenda needs to mention that an exemption is being considered, and so I think that's been added because of some Brown Act changes. So, I personally would be comfortable with it not being attached, but it's up to the commission to decide what needs to be part of the recommended resolution.
If it doesn't need to be there, I don't need to have it there. Then, in the second whereas clause, I think in order to avoid confusion, when you say whereas after the concurrent boundary line adjustment is completed, the resulting, I would say, resulting parcel and then in parentheses, have 010-029-001, so to keep track of which parcel we're talking about.
The parcel number might change after the lot line adjustments?
Oh, really?
Yes.
Okay.
Might.
Take that suggestive out of it. I might as well not have come to it.
It is a little confusing. Without reading the staff...
The resulting parcel, though. The resulting is a good addition.
Yeah, yeah. Now, that's fine. If that might change, then it isn't the resulting.
I could at least clarify by saying, you know, the boundary line adjustment with the adjacent parcel, something to kind of explain what boundary lines...
But isn't it...
I think just the resulting parcel...
The resulting parcel's fine. Page 2, up at the top, the start of the sentence, "The subject parcel," there, I think, is kind of a... It gets unclear. I'd say, "As it currently exists, parcel 010-029-001 is developed with residential structures." And toward the end of that sentence, where the however is, "However, the portion proposed to be added and rezoned..." Same sentence. It's after the semicolon. And finally, in under paragraph 2 in the evidence, about halfway through that paragraph, there's a sentence, "The current residential use of the property is permitted in the A1 zone, and the size of the parcel is more beneficial to a residential," I would take out, "primary use" because A1 is... The primary use is not supposed to be residential. And that, if we can have a map that actually shows Shad Road as the sign, that's what I have.
There's also an accidental 2 before the 4 that you missed.
That I missed? It's my responsibility. I've...
Does anybody else have any grammatical modifications they would like to make?
You throw dare.
Suggestions they'd like to throw out for discussion? All right. Then, I... Are you good, Madeline? You got all that?
I sure am.
Then, we are ready for the recommendation.
Make the motion to approve.
I'm going to make my recommendation.
First, yes, well, first, you get some...
The sentence.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Staff recommends the Planning Commission approve amended Planning Commission Resolution 2023-006, recommending the Board of Supervisors amend the zoning of an approximately 0.98 acre portion of APN 010-029-001 from general forest to general agriculture as shown in Exhibit A of Planning Commission Resolution 2023-006, and approve the notice of exemption, finding that the project is exempt from SEQA pursuant to Section 15061B3.
Sure. I second that.
Any discussion? Nope. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Passes 5-0-0.
It's done.
Yay! This item is final?
Oh, no, it's not.
We're recommending you to the Board of Supervisors.
And do we have any idea when it will be on their agenda?
I don't, but I expect, you know, it'll be a very short public hearing, so I don't think it'll be too much trouble fitting it in to...
Fitting it on.
Yeah.
Okay. Moving on to item 2. We're going to do a big swap here. Get John in the hot seat. Item 2, 2022-037, conditional use permit for a childcare center. And our planner, John Franklin, is going to lead us.
Good morning, Planning Commission.
Good morning.
So, this is my first time here, so it's nice to finally get to be here.
Yep.
It is on. Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
It's nice to get to see all of you here. As you know, today, I'm presenting a CUP, a conditional use permit. It's project 2022-037 for a child daycare center. Annette, if you could please pull up the Google Street View of 304 Highway 4, Murfrees, California. So, that is the location of the child daycare center. So, the applicant had applied for this. It's an existing commercial building. There's been a little bit of confusion. Some people thought it was residential, but it's a existing commercial structure. They're proposing to have about 22 children... or 22 people, 18 children. Some students or some children are going to be between the ages of four and five, and some between the ages of two and three. The applicant is here today. Her name is Brandy. The subject property is a 3.7 acre parcel located at 304 Highway 4 in Murfrees, California. It's zoned commercial professional with a residential or a rural residential land use. Surrounding it are rural residential zoned properties, also with the rural residential land use. Across the highway, though, you have a public service zone, and it is also with the public service land use. That is the location of the, I believe, it's the Michelson Elementary School. If you could pull up the street view, if you could go to like the rural street view of it, it gives a really good shot of the driveway, which I'd like to include. So, right now, they have an existing 1,476 square foot commercial structure, and it's currently being converted from the previous use, which looked to be a consultancy group, and they're doing a bunch of tentative improvements currently. It's provided with water and wastewater services by the Union Public Utility District, and it's within the Murfrees Fire Protection District as well. The access is taken directly off of Highway 4, which will be a significant portion later. So, the intent of the commercial professional zone is typically to provide administrative offices, professional offices, and they do allow for some conditionally permitted residential uses. This would be one of them. Calaveras County Code 17.38.030 allows a daycare center under the residential uses with the conditional use permit. They have indicated that there's eight parking spaces available for the use. They have set forth a minimum standard of one per 250 square feet, which is how we arrived to that. Based on their square footage, they would need a minimum of six, which they are meeting and exceeding. We had routed this for 30 days to different departments and different local agencies. We had received several comments. The first was from the County Environmental Management Agency. They had requested that they have regular trash pickup, as well as a location for the bins to be placed, as well as maintain their connections to water and wastewater services. The next comment I received was from Caltrans, and they had reviewed the application. They were looking at the encroachment, and they're asking that the applicant apply for an encroachment permit to improve. We're not sure if it's an encroachment improvement. We're not sure what. They just asked for them to apply. The next portion, the next comments we received was from Building and Fire Prevention, which is also within the Building Department. They had requested that the applicant apply for an 850 license, which is essentially an occupancy inspection. The applicant has already provided proof of that, that they have gone forward. The next portion that we received, as far as their comment, is they're requesting that the... Fortunately, I don't have the exact street view up, but on the street view, because it's right up of the highway, what they're requesting is that the curb be red painted so no one can park there, along with signage. It's a health and safety issue from what I've been described. And then, there was some requirements to increase the width of the driveway. Oh, perfect. Thank you, Annette. So, as you can clearly see, the driveway only allows for the access of one vehicle at a time, which is a safety issue. So, there are... There's required improvements for the driveway, possibly required improvements for the encroachment, so that should satisfy the health and safety issues. That way, people can get in and out at the same time. People aren't waiting on the highway. And then, again, everything being red striped prevents parents from pulling up and having kids run in and out of the driveway, which was a very significant issue that we discovered. So, moving on to the environmental review portion of this, we found that it was exempt under SEQA 15301 as existing facilities, being that this is a currently built-out commercial structure. Most of it is tentative improvements that are being done to the term. And then, we have the staff recommendation. So, staff recommends that Planning Commission adopt Resolution 2023-007, approving the conditional use permit 2022-037 to allow the conversion of a 1,476 square foot commercial building to a child daycare center at 304 Highway 4, Murfrees, California, APN 066035003 in the commercial professional zone, subject to conditions.
While you have that slide up, one of the conditions talks about a curb, and it looks like there's an asphalt curb to one side, but none on the other. I just wanted to point that out so we can talk about it during the resolution.
Okay.
So, I had a question that was... It's really just a little technicality, and I don't really see an...
and I don't really see an issue. But the definition of a daycare center included in the staff report doesn't seem to be complete and it talks only about school age children. But the application is clear that these are preschool age children for the most part.
Right.
But when I read the various definitions in our zoning code, it seemed clearly the intent would be to include everybody, so I don't see a problem. I just think maybe we want to correct that to say both preschool and school age children.
I was going to, since that's only in the staff report, I was going to suggest that in the resolution, we cite the ordinance that defines a child daycare center, which is not limited to school age children.
Right. And perhaps clean that up in our zoning code update to make it more clear for future applicants.
Right. I reviewed that myself as well. So it would fall on, so unfortunately it would fall under daycare and child daycare centers specifically, which is one of the four listed definitions. And that's not listed anywhere in any of the zones, unfortunately. As a permitted or conditional use, going through, you pretty much have daycare center or family daycare home, which is in the majority of zones. And then for the rest of them, it's child daycare center, which is undefined. We don't have a definition for that.
We do for daycare and it's in multiple locations.
We have a definition for child daycare center.
It's just not listed as a use in any of the zones, oddly enough.
Yeah. I think that that's an issue of our zoning code, not of the intention.
The commercial professional zone also allows for the director to make similar uses and compatibility, so.
Right. I just think we want to make it clear in the resolution, as Tim is suggesting. And beyond that, I don't really have questions at this time. Does anybody else have any questions?
Well, I know we'll be discussing this in the resolution, but the requirement for the red curb or no parking zone at that, at that... I'm not sure that that makes any sense, because that means that people would be parking farther away, but so people, the children will be walking on the highway and...
It does make sense if you're familiar with that area.
Yeah.
Where there's a huge issue because the Feeny Park is right across the street and people park all up and down the highway.
Right.
So we've been trying to eliminate that for some time.
But that would, I mean, and that's an answer to the general problem. The problem is if people are showing up between 5:00 and 6:00 o'clock to pick up their kids and there's eight places in the lot, including staff and this sort of thing, it's not going to be enough room for parking there. And if you, if you just bar parking on the highway in front of this, it means people will be parking farther away on the highway to get to their children.
I feel, I think that maybe we're ready to have the applicant come up and discuss how you guys feel like you're going to be able to manage pickups and drop off. Yeah, daycare is a great thing.
I do understand their concern with parents parking off the highway. The one thing I want to make sure everybody understands is that parents have to bring their kids in. They can't just send their kids in. So if they're worried about kids walking by the highway, they can't. Our parents have to send their kids in and send their kids out. So they will have to walk them in, sign them in, and lock them back out. So as far as that being a concern, I don't think it really is for me. But I'm happy to paint the curbs red if that's, you know, what the county feels is best and that's what we do when we put up the no parking signs. But there is plenty of parking spaces in the parking lot. The parking lot doesn't look very big from this picture. And then the maximum employees we'll have at a time would be three, possibly four. And then the maximum number of kids we would have is 22. But again, most of the time it's siblings. So often, you know, a couple of kids come in one car. So that was the only concern with the, with the parking issue. And then, and then the 850 license is taken care of. I just got a copy from the fire inspector, so I have to take it back up to the fire chief in Murfrees. They needed to make some adjustments, so Hayden will look back over it. We sign it. We'll get that sent in today. And I think that was, those were the only things.
I have a question. So I'm a question and a comment, kind of. I'm assuming that the kids are being dropped off and picked up at various times, too, so it won't be like a school rush, right?
Yes, my question. Yes.
Kind of depends on the...
So we'll open at 7:00. Preschool will be from 8:00 to 2:00.
Okay.
So some kids will get dropped off anywhere, usually drop off, like right now I'm running it out of my home. Right now, kids are dropped off anywhere from 7:00 a.m. to like 9:00 a.m. So there's a two-hour window of drop offs. It might get a little bit busy around 8:00, but it's not going to be a big preschool, so it won't be extremely busy as far as traffic goes. And then pickup will be anywhere from 2:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. So that's a three-hour window.
It breaks up the, it breaks up the timing. So it's not like, it's not like school pickup where you have a whole bunch of parents lined up around the street.
Like across the street.
Yeah, I mean, everybody knows peak traffic, yeah.
So I'm assuming that if you have school age children, you'll send one of your staff members across to Michelson?
Yeah, so they can walk to Michelson. There is a crosswalk right there, so we would be able to use the crosswalk and then walk up the, walk up the sidewalk as well. As of right now, we don't have the license for school age children, but that's something we're working on with the state. So as of right now, it'll be 2:00 to 5:00, but yes, school age children eventually will be in the mix.
Transitional kindergarten, though.
Yeah. And then we also want to set up an option for doing mainstreaming with the special ed preschool that's right across the street as well. They do mainstream with Head Start right now, but it's, you know, it never hurts to have options, so.
That's great.
John, I have a, so okay, John, I have a question. You know, previous to it being this professional building, it used to be a dentist office. And has something changed to where that driveway? Because that driveway's always been that driveway.
Forever.
And so has something changed to where we needed to really look at the flow of traffic? I agree that if it's widened, it would be better for entrance and... But had something changed previously or... You probably don't.
So my understanding, it's the fire code. It's part of the state fire code which triggered this.
And it's been updated?
Everything got updated on the first of this year. All new codes went in, but they go, they get updated every three years.
Okay.
So.
So unless you, unless you open up the door, then whatever was previous was allowed. But once it changes?
Yeah. The change in use, the occupancy of the building. It went from a business profession's use to an educational use. That's, that's the trigger.
Okay, makes sense.
This is exciting. This is good for, this is good for our community. It's much needed.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. The Caltrans encroachment permit isn't unfortunate.
Yes.
It has been, it has been a process, but it's moving. We have Weber-Giannis here. It's working on plans for what needs to be done. Billy Cooper Engineering is, has agreed to do the work once they get the plan. So everything is moving forward. There's a lot of, you know, hoops to jump through and paperwork to fill out, but, but we're prepared for, you know, for making those changes so that we can get this pushed through, so.
And it'll be better once it's done, because you won't have parents running into each other.
Yeah.
So tentative start date would be this school year, you hope?
I would, yeah, if we can get the real work done, I would like to open up, yeah. September 1st would be, would be perfect, so.
Are there any other questions for Brandy?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
So.
We've heard the staff recommendation.
We're going to go ahead and open this up for public comment. So if there's anybody who would like to share anything they think we need to know about this project.
Good morning. I'm Kristy Reesman with Island Financial. I'm doing SBA name for Brandy. When she initially submitted this application last year, she was doing so as a tenant of the current landowner. But a couple of months ago, they got into a contract for her to purchase. And so she is actually going to be the owner of this going forward. And the driveway improvements are a condition of the contract. So the contract is supposed to be closed by August 15th. And so that's the timeframe for getting all of this done. So hopefully, we can do it. I opened my business in Murfrees in 1996 and there was a problem with lack of licensed childcare then. And I think it's actually even worse now because one of the previous daycares and preschool, daycares in Murfrees has since closed. One of the things that I wanted to point out is that the 25 mile an hour school zone on Highway 4 actually starts right at the property line of this property. So it is within the 25 mile an hour zone. The lot corner is right across from the flashing light that's outside of Feeny Park. So that kind of makes this a perfect location. I did have one question for you, John. You mentioned that this is a resident, that residential use is permitted in CP and then home daycare or daycare is a use underneath residential. But that's not the use that we're going for, because that would limit her to 14 children. So we're looking for the conditional, for the daycare as a commercial use.
Right. That's, that's just how it reads under our code. It's listed as a residential use, but it's recognized that it's commercial.
Okay, because...
It's just how it's organized within the definitions. So we have different definitions of, some of them are like professional, some of them are administrative. For some reason, this is listed as residential, oddly enough.
Okay, okay. So I just bring that up, because even though at this time her intention is 22 children, approximately, there is some room on that parcel for some expansion. And because daycare is such a vital and use that I would like to see that it's not restricted in any way to the number of children, so that if she can expand and one day take on 30 or whatever, that, that that's available to her to do.
So based on the definition itself, it doesn't actually limit the number of kids versus when you look at the definition of actual residential zones, it calls out typically less than 12 children and then greater than 12 children's a conditional use permit. But that's just in zones that are specifically residential.
Right.
Okay.
That doesn't apply to you.
Right.
Okay, all right, perfect. And I think that's it. Thank you so much.
This is an enthusiastic group. On behalf of everybody.
Yeah, which will, yeah, right?
Thanks for having us. So my daughter goes to Brandy's daycare. We recently moved up here about a year ago or so and I literally called everybody probably five, six, seven times. Like, I need somebody. I'm a full-time working mom, so is my husband. So really kind of needed that. And I interrogated Brandy enough where she took me in. My daughter is two and she is above and beyond. She's talking, she's all of the things. So all of the parents are very in favor of wanting this to open. It's a great location for all of us, because we're in Murfrees. Most of the preschools take, I think, three and above, or she takes two, which is, in my case, great. And also, she's also started something where we all are in communication, where we can talk to each other through an app called Band. So whenever there's need to be picked up early or anything like that. And her driveway right now, too, is a little bit narrow and we make it work. We've been kind of doing this, you know, together for a year. So we're happy to do whatever is needed.
Thank you. This is going to be the most feel-good.
Good morning. My name is Stephanie Schuler and I own Little Shoes Daycare down in Angels Camp. And I currently only have eight parking spots and I have 20 children in my daycare. I've been open for 10 years. It's never been a problem. My driveway is a little wider, but it was also like kind of grandmothered down when I bought the property, so I didn't have to make all these big changes you guys are asking for now. Thank you. So I just want to give you that input that I mean. With the traffic, with the kids coming in and out, it's so sporadic. Even with my four staff, there's never been an incident, except for with the school bus, because she didn't see the person driving it. So I just wanted to let you know that. Thanks.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Of course.
Good morning. My name is Jessica Bowman. I am a Realtor at Premier Properties. I am representing both the seller of the building and the aldersons in the purchase of this building. I also oversaw her lease as well. So I just know from living on Main Street, Murfrees, myself, how excited the community is. I raised my son myself, who's now 13, as a single mom and owned two businesses in Murfrees. And finding childcare was impossible for me since 2015, when I moved back from London. So I think her success is going to be impactful for the community at large and a huge blessing to our community. So thank you in advance for helping her make this happen.
Thank you. Okay. Last chance. Okay, we are going to close the public comment portion of this hearing and come back to the commissioners.
Well, I have some questions, but I'd want to make very clear before I'm talking. In favor of childcare in this location. I'd hate to have tomatoes thrown or... First, I want to compliment you, John. It was a very thorough presentation and you obviously have done your homework as to what's required in residential areas as opposed to here and everything else. And it's a pleasure to have you join us.
Thank you.
I do think that... Now I'm going to move on to the resolution. Is that okay?
Well, let's give everybody else a chance. Does anybody else have any questions for John before we start talking about the resolution?
I don't have any questions, but also just comment, great job, first presentation. It's a big deal, so, yeah, keep at it.
Thank you all.
I know, I know.
It's really just going to be a feel-good day.
It can be nerve wracking, but you did a great job.
But that's one, John, we're going to have people opposed. Hopefully not. I would suggest that in the first whereas clause in the resolution, first, every time you mention child daycare center, I think we ought to have that presented the way it is in the, in the ordinance, which is daycare is two words with a C being capitalized. And then, and then that would go throughout the resolution. And then after you say child daycare center in that whereas clause, I'd have a comma and say, as specified in Calaveras Code, And that doesn't limit it to school age children or numbers or anything else. Let's see. Then I would really, oh, under Finding 5, under the evidence, the site is accessed by existing encroachment and driveway off Highway 4. Okay? Then it's really down to the conditions. And Condition 1-3, it seems to me we should say building permit instead of build permit. Then I would add a general Condition 1-5. And let me read it normal speed and then if people agree that that'd be a good thing to have, I'll dictate it. The operator of any use authorized by... The operator of any use authorized by this conditional use permit shall at all times maintain in effect any and all state licenses required for such use. So we're not going to be policing what the state polices, but if the license is revoked, this conditional use is revoked. Before, if, if nobody has an objection to that, I will dictate it. Okay? The operator of any use authorized by, by this conditional use permit shall at all times maintain in effect any and all state licenses required for such use. Read it that slow, it sounds as if it should be on stone tablets. Then. Oh, in our package, you, you include the, the site plan and you talk about it in the resolution as attachment A, it's just not.
I do have an extra one for the attachment for the site, the resolution.
Great, great. Then. I'm going to take some of these out of order. 3-2, since the, the site plan specifies that it's going to be the Murphy's sanitation district, I think we can have liquid waste slant sewage shall be properly disposed through active connection to the Murphy's sanitation district facilities. And similar, the condition 3-3, it'd be the subject partial shall be supplied with potable water for consumption by members of the public, then crossing out the, the second sentence, add to the first sentence through the Union Public Utility District.
Couldn't we just simplify this by in each case saying the parcel is currently supplied with potable water, sewer services, whichever one, and, and that an active connection must be maintained? It's been served for decades.
Right.
It was just a. But I do want to talk about the first one.
Okay.
I'm not sure a condition that requires an applicant to have service through a private company for garbage disposal makes sense.
That was going to suggest.
And so if they are willing to haul their garbage themselves every week, as long as they keep it in a clean and sanitary condition, I, I object to that.
Well, I was going to suggest that we change that sentence to securing services from a county permitted solid waste collection firm.
Only have one choice.
Permitted solid waste collection would be one way to satisfy this requirement.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, but there's a transfer station, I mean, they're right between two transfer stations. It's not difficult to handle it yourself. If you're willing, they might not be, but.
Madam Chair, a question for, for Mr. Franklin. Is that an EMA condition?
Yes, that was one of the conditions that EMA had asked of us.
Came directly from, from the EMA.
But look at the, their conditions made were just like routine, that we're going to make these requirements for every project. They didn't even look at what was existing on the parcel.
Specifics, yeah.
So I feel like that was a generic response, not specific to this.
Just letting you know that it did not originate from the planning department.
I saw it in the letter. I'm just saying that I, I feel like they should be given the flexibility to handle it in whatever way works.
I can speak with Ms. Medina and we can talk about it so that I'm sure she, I, I agree, it's probably just routine and she's probably unaware of some of what we might want to change.
Do we have the ability now to take that out or is that going to have to go through the process?
Because I happen to know self-haul is allowed. I think it's okay as long as we're not changing an existing regulation or ordinance, we should be okay. And I'll defer a little bit to Ms. Plotnick on knowing more specifically what is currently a regulation for EMA. You know, these are just courtesy conditions to make sure the applicant is aware that when they get a ministerial permit, even if they didn't have to come to the planning commission, these are things that EMA would, would require. And we, I think we are all aware that they would be okay with an existing connection and they would allow self-haul.
Exactly.
Okay. Then as far as condition 4-1, it seems to me that it's clear the project activity is encroached onto Caltrans right away, so we don't need that part. We can start by saying the project proponent must apply for and secure approval of any required encroachment permit from, instead of to, the Caltrans District 10 Encroachment Permit Office. And then the last sentence isn't necessary. Did you get that, John?
You want to repeat that one more time?
Sure.
Why are we changing it?
Why are we changing it? Because it's clear, it doesn't approach on the Highway 4, so we don't need that first part. And the last sentence has to do with what the requirements are for Caltrans. And, you know, you can get that at the Caltrans desk, so.
But there's nothing, well, I don't.
It seems to me that, that Caltrans wants them to apply for an encroachment.
Yes, exactly.
That's all I'm trying to cover.
Yeah.
Is that, so it would be the project proponent must apply for and secure approval of any required encroachment permit from the Caltrans District 10 Encroachment Permit Office.
That's fine. Yeah, I don't feel strongly one way or the other.
Then the condition 5-3, it seems to me that Caltrans probably, you probably can't go out and paint on the highway. And so I, if we're going to have that.
You're right.
In there, I think you have to start with, with the concurrence of Caltrans.
Okay.
And then the second sentence, or actually, I, I would, yeah. With the concurrence of Caltrans, no parking will be allowed on Highway 4, semicolon, the curb where there is one shall be painted red. Yeah, this gets so complex. What I'm trying to get around to is that we have a red line if there's no curb.
Right.
So the curb, or if there is no curb, a line along the edge of the pavement shall be painted red and signage shall be provided stating no parking is allowed on the highway. Again, that makes no sense to me because if there's no room in the parking lot, then we're forcing people to park farther away from, from the, from the facility. And so I, I, I don't, I don't understand the logic of building and fire preventions.
Commissioner Ladish, I, I think the logic lies in the fact that it's, it's kind of a safety issue. They don't want parents parked on the curb. And I think it's a good thing that the preschool owner has actually told the planning commission that, you know, you bring your child into the property, you assign them in and you sign them out. So when we're looking at this, the expectation was you might have some parents who drop their kids off on the highway and then you run into the property and that is not the case. So why this condition was originated, it was designed to prevent cars from being parked where the red curb is going to be and then kids actually walking into the property or walking out of the property to come to their parents' cars. But if each child is going to be checked in specifically by a parent and then checked out specifically by a parent, then there is no need to have vehicles parked on the road and maybe there is no need to have reds driving. So this is something we can discuss internally to see if that condition can be modified in such a way that it actually works for both parties because the goal here is, is safety.
Yeah, and if the goal is safety, my point is, is that if, if there isn't room in the parking lot, they need to park out on the highway. And parking in front of the facility is a lot safer than parking farther away from the facility because people will be walking along the highway past the red curb to get to the driveway to take their kids in. I agree with you that the, that the policy of the facility is parents have to show up with their children so that they're, the.
I, I, Commissioner, I think the bigger concern is that Caltrans nor the county wants vehicles parked on the highway for whatever reason, unless it's an abandoned vehicle or it's going through some kind of mechanical issue. So they don't want parents stopping because it impedes the flow of traffic through that particular area. So that, that's the logic behind that condition.
But this is.
So, so if it's not, so if the parking lot is full, you know, I, I, I think maybe that the logical thing to do would be, you know, for the parent to maybe circle the block and, and then come back. I mean, I'm just, I, I, I'm using, I'm using that, I'm using that casually, sort of, well, I mean.
Yeah, it's just that in this case, they're going to pull over whether it's red or not and they're going to. I think we can resolve this. I have a suggestion.
We could.
That we reword it so that we say the applicant will comply with any requirements for limiting parking on the highway imposed by Caltrans or the Calaveras County Building Department and let them solve that issue. Because they're going to submit plans anyway, that's all going to be part of that review. And then we can defer this to the experts on that issue.
That makes sense. That's a marvelous suggestion because this, this doesn't make any sense at all.
So did I confuse everything?
No. If you repeat it one more time so I can.
You have to come back with it.
Yeah, that the applicant will comply with any limitations on parking along State Route 4 imposed by California Department of Transportation or the Calaveras County Building Department or Public Works.
But I, I think Tim's point is well taken regarding permission to paint it red because I know that I wanted to do that at the high school and I had to ask Caltrans permission to paint.
And it takes two years.
Yeah, to paint, to paint the curb red. Yeah, so that, that is a valid point.
It's a very valid point.
And then we get to the condition 5.5, at no point shall the grade for all roads and driveways exceed 16%. You really only have 2% grade.
Oh, no, it, it, it actually is.
It actually is fairly steep.
It's fairly steep.
Yeah, it's hard to tell on the street view, but when you go up it, it kind of.
Oh, okay, okay.
It does a little bit.
Fine.
That's great.
Would you believe I'm done?
Because are there any pages? Oh, there is. Okay, you think you captured all of that?
I think so, yeah.
Great. Then are there any further comments? Would anybody like to say anything that'll get them a little bit of applause?
Yes, yes. I will move to approve.
Let's hear the record.
But we'll wait for you to.
So staff recommends approval of the amended resolution by the planning commission of Calaveras County at our regular meeting today on June 22nd, 2023.
Okay, I will move to approve as amended.
I will second.
There we go.
Any discussion?
What's coming?
None. Motion passes 500.
Congratulations.
Now Julie probably has something to say.
Yes, I think that's final unless appealed to the Board of Supervisors within 15 calendar days.
All right. Hold your breath for 15 days, not literally. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
For all your enthusiasms.
And for the long process. Any steps forward or anything for us?
Congratulations.
Yeah, I think everyone's going to be thrilled. So we have no informational items. Do we have any commissioner reports?
I, I don't have any reports, but I have two questions. The first is, I'm, I, I think, I'm not sure it's under our preview, but the realignment of Highway 4, I'm having people ask, it feels like construction has stopped.
It has.
And I don't, I don't know how to respond. Yeah, it has stopped, but I don't.
There was actually an article in the paper explaining that.
Was it the archaeological?
Archaeological issue. And I believe the Board of Supervisors, you guys might know, Board of Supervisors voted to transfer some money to keep the project moving until they can see if it's going to be compensated for by Caltrans. And so there was a.
That dig is at the other end of it though, right? And so why aren't, I mean, it's, they're not doing the realignment before Cool Station Road. They haven't started that and that's, and I also heard that there was a water issue too, and that's why those metal plates are down, but, okay, okay.
Madam Chair, if the commission would like a, an update on that subject matter, we can have the Public Works Department provide you with some information if that's important to you.
Yeah, I think they or the cog would have an update on it.
Update, yeah. Okay. And my second question is, when something is appealed to the Board of Supervisors, do we get a report back of how the Board of Supervisors acted on that appeal?
No, that kind of goes along with our discussion, yeah, a few weeks ago about whether we should get a report back on a, an action that is taken by Gabriel or the director on a, something that's ministerial and that we don't actually see. So, yeah.
I mean, Madam Chair, if it's, if it's requested, we can do that.
It's requested. Well, I, it, yeah, I've just, I'm just curious. We had a, a hearing a few meetings ago and I'm sure those folks appealed to the Board of Supervisors.
It hasn't gone to the board.
It hasn't gone to the board yet.
It's going on the 27th of June.
Oh, it's going on the 27th of June. I, I think it'd be, maybe just as part of the planning director's report.
Absolutely.
To, that's on what the board.
I mean, something that the planning commission actually acted upon, I, I think it's, it's incumbent upon us to bring you a resolution to it. Yeah.
Yeah, I actually asked about.
Did you?
Like, did it get appealed or what?
Because I keep looking and it's just.
It, it, it got appealed and the applicants agreed to extend the appeal period because of county issues with the budget and, and other things. So it's, it's, it should have gone to the board before now, but it's going on the 27th.
All right. Will we have a meeting at the first, the second Tuesday, the second Thursday?
Name this section, Commissioner.
Yes, there, there is, there would be an item or two.
And will one of those items involve greenhouse gas?
Potentially.
Potentially. Thank you.
In July.
In July.
So this kind of, does, does any other commissioner have a report before we just move on to questioning the director? before we just move on to questioning the director? Do we know when we might see the first, I'm sorry, zoning code update on the agenda?
Julie, do you want to? Well, I mean, let me put it to you this way. Let me put it to you this way. We are getting very close, very, very close. And we had anticipated June, but I think you might be seeing this in July if, sometime, sometime very soon, including other items that are going to be coming up.
Might be a great thing to not have greenhouse gases in the zoning ordinance.
No, we will not do that. We will not do that to you.
Please, let's do that.
No, we will not do that to you.
Do you have anything else you'd like to share with us?
Well, I mean, I had told you that if, this would be a good opportunity to provide you with any results from any actions taken by the planning director. It so happens that during this particular period between the last planning commission meeting and this meeting, there have been no applications approved by the planning director.
Wow. All right.
That could change.
Okay, well, look at that. We're adjourning this meeting at 10:12 and a half.